This is an MS Views and News program, and we are sponsored tonight by Alexion Pharmaceuticals. So I want to hear it. Let's give them a round of applause and say thank you. Thank you very much. Also tonight, we had exhibitors. We had, of course, Alexion was here, Genentech, Bristol-Myers Squibb, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, a company called New Tech Mobility. We also had Viatris, Novartis, the Pediatric MS Society or Association of America, and Sandoz Pharmaceuticals, okay? And so we want to thank them all for being here as well. I'm not going to keep rattling on and on and on because we do have a short window of time tonight, and I know Dr. Hendon wants to speak before it gets any louder. So let's get this started, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. MS 101 implies you're going to get this kind of very basic view of MS, and that would be probably the same as you would have gotten five years ago, or 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, which couldn't be further from the truth. MS is rapidly changing. That's one of the really good things about the field. So MS is rapidly changing. Insofar as MS is rapidly changing, MS 101, at this moment in time, 2023, October, it would be different than it would have been a year ago, way different than it would have been five years ago, more different than it would have been 15 years ago. So really what I want to do is bring you up to date in terms of language and thinking. If you pick up a circular on MS, you're going to see a lot of the traditional language, traditional thinking. I want to kind of move you ahead to where we're going. Chris knows that I was in Milan a week and a half ago at ECTRUMS, which is the European Committee for Treatment and Research in MS. It's where we're talking about the future. That's where we're looking, not about congratulating ourselves on today, but what we think we may be able to do in the future. And so it's in a way the future language that I want to mix in with what we're talking about in general. So the first thought is, what's MS? When I get a medical student or intern or resident at Banner, my practice is at Banner University Medical Center and a private practice too, and when I get a new intern resident medical student, I say to them, is MS a white matter disease or a gray matter disease? Whichever one you pick, you won't get it right. And they all were taught what I was taught, and that is a white matter disease, right? It's white and gray. So if they had picked white, they'd be wrong. If they picked gray, they'd be wrong. The answer is both. The second question I ask, which by that time they've caught on, I say, and is MS an inflammatory disease or a neurodegenerative disease? And they go, hmm, is it both? And the answer is it's both. And so the first thing I want you to know is that when we talk about MS right now, it really is a concentration on the biology of MS, the histopathology, the biology of MS. You all are used to thinking about MS via what we call phenotypes. Is it relapsing MS with or without secondary progression? Is it primary progressive MS? Is it a precursor, CIS, clinically isolated syndrome, just one event? A precursor of that, RIS, when you just have an MRI abnormality called RIS, or radiologically isolated? Is it a precursor of that called a prodrome? So you're used to hearing about it in its stages, in its presentation, in its phenotype. Great. Those words will persist for long, long after today. But when we're talking about it as MS neurologists currently, we're recognizing the language of the old phenotypes, and we're talking about the biology of what happens to the cells in MS, what happens to the brain and spinal cord in MS, and that is how much inflammation is going on and how much degeneration is going on, progression or degeneration. So whether we know that in MS, there is inflammation going on from before you were ever diagnosed, but the inflammation diminishes and changes over the years. Now, the likelihood of an attack diminishes and changes over the years. The type of inflammation changes from these acute inflammatory events called relapses or attacks to a more smoldering inflammation that we haven't been able to do a great job with up till now. We'll talk about that. We know that as opposed to neuromyelitis optica, which is only attack driven without much progression, that for people with MS, the concern often, the existential concern is, all right, I'm not having relapses anymore, but I'm having progression. And we'll say as a field, we've been really great at reducing the frequency of relapses because we've been able to use high efficacy therapies early. Our newer agents are really much higher efficacy than our old legacy agents, and often say, often quite with a very good safety profile as well. We haven't been able to do as good a job with progression. And I will tell you that people come into my office all the time and say, you told me my MRI is stable. Why am I worse this year than I was the year before? And that's that kind of smoldering, slow progression that people worry about as they age, and that we haven't been able to get a handle on, and we are hoping to get a much better handle on in the year ahead. And I'll talk to you about the future and really what we may have as an option for progression with events or with better results in the early part of the coming year, and with hopefully a new agent or two on the market by the end of next year. So what am I trying to say? You all have been trained to think about phenotypes. We've been trained to think about phenotypes too. When I, I've been a neurologist for more than 50 years. I hope that doesn't scare anybody too much. And I left training in Washington University St. Louis, 1972. I arrived here in '74. There wasn't a CT scanner in Arizona the day I arrived, and we were very slow to make the diagnosis because even if you made the diagnosis, you couldn't treat it. The first disease-modifying therapies didn't hit the scene until 1993. So 1993, we had the very first disease-modifying therapy. It was an interferon. The interferons were 30% better than placebo. You say, gee, that doesn't sound great. Compared to zero, it was spectacular. So for the first time in 1993, we could change the trajectory of MS. Before that, someone came in with MS, and we'd say, you've got MS, and the question is, what's going to become of you? And the answer really was, what will become of you is really according more than anything else to the will of the disease. After 1993, we finally, as a community, that means us all, had something we could do that could change the trajectory. So we kept pushing the diagnosis earlier and earlier. At first, we said, it's not MS unless it's multiple, multiple sclerosis. You need two attacks in two different places at two different times. And then they said, well, gee, if we've got an agent, wouldn't it be interesting if we could use that agent at the first event to prevent the second attack? And the answer was, we found that using some of our early agents at the first attack, when it wasn't yet MS, a sign called CIS, a clinically isolated syndrome, maybe it was just CIS, we could treat, we could treat and prevent or reduce the likelihood of the second event. And we could. So it meant that we now started making the diagnosis earlier. Said, maybe if the MRI shows an old event and a new event, you don't have to have two attacks. We can use the MRI to create what we call dissemination time and space. And then they said, gee, if we want to push it earlier still, maybe we should be looking at MRIs that accidentally show MS. I can't tell you how often I see someone who's been in a motor vehicle accident, or has headaches, or whatever. Southern neurologist got an MRI scan, and someone said, you've got MS. And they say, no, I don't have MS. I've never had an event. I'm healthy. They say, but your MRI looks like MS. We'll see periodically what's called RIS, not CIS, a clinically isolated syndrome, but RIS, a radiologically isolated syndrome, where the MRI looks like MS, but the person's never had an attack, and actually is feeling fine, and their exam's perfect. We're now looking earlier and earlier is what I'm telling you. And so we're thinking, the most good we do, we do early at the present time. And so we're trying to push the boundaries earlier. Relapsing MS, CIS, RIS, and even the prodrome, how people feel the year before they're ever diagnosed, when you say, how are you feeling the year before? The answer is, not quite right, a little more fatigue, a little more this, a little more that, in many people. So A, we're trying to push the diagnosis earlier. I talked about the phenotypes, but then simultaneously told you that I want you concentrating on biology. How much inflammation is there? How much degenerative change is there, progression? And the language you're going to hear, because it's the language we're talking about, is RAW, R-A-W. That's relapse-associated worsening versus PIRA. PIRA is progression independent of relapsed activity. We've been great at reducing relapses. We have not been great at reducing progression independent of relapsed activity. And that's some, I'll save that till the end and tell you where we think the future is going there, because I'm very optimistic about the year ahead and finally getting a hold of progression or PIRA or late progression. So that was the first part of why I wanted to tell you, biology and phenotype, and the importance of early recognition and our understanding of the importance of treating early. Number two, when I said we had treatments that began in 1993, it reminded me that in the end, there are four buckets of treatment that I'd like you all to think about, not one bucket. If you see your neurologist, your neurologist is always going to concentrate on the disease-modifying therapy. Have you been taking your medication? Did you get your MRI? Have you had any new events? Because that's what we've been good at doing up till now. But there are three other buckets in terms of trying to maintain wellness in MS. One bucket was there long before the disease-modifying therapies. Remember, disease-modifying therapies 1993, nothing before that. Before that, we had, we had the ability to stop to treat relapses. We still need to treat relapses. Our current agents have reduced the likelihood of relapses from one every two or three years to one every 10 or 11 years. We've gotten really good at reducing relapses, but we haven't stopped them. And so we'll still need either steroids or ACTH occasionally for an acute relapse. We say that those steroids predominantly reduce the duration of an attack, get you better faster, but you'll get to be wherever you're going to get to be, probably to about the same level with or without the steroids. They're not curative. They're kind of a speeder-upper. The third one is so important, and it's symptomatic meds. The things that I use for disease-modifying therapies, I will say to an individual, someone with MS, this is about the future. I want, by starting this today, it's my goal to keep you as close as you are today in the future. 10 years, 20 years from today, I want to keep you as close as I can to today. But it's about the future. The question is, but I'm feeling lousy today. What do I do about today? And that's where our symptomatic therapies come in. They're very important, and they're very important to talk about with your clinician. So bladder influences quality of life. Fatigue influences quality of life. Depression, anxiety influence quality of life. Spasticity influences quality of life. Mobility influences quality of life, and on and on and on. If I think the whole world's about my disease-modifying therapy, I've missed the boat because I've only got my eyes on the future, whereas people live their lives today. So I have a checklist when someone comes into my office and they say, do I have to fill it out every time? The answer is, you have to fill it out every time. And that is, what symptoms are you having? Mood, bladder, falls, gait, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's really an essential part of what we do, and it's part of this concept of it takes a village. So you're a neurologist, no matter, you're a clinician, you're a neurologist, you're a nurse practitioner, you're PA, you're MS neurologist. No matter how good he or she is, they're not a village. And we rely on others. I rely on a wonderful urologist, or two or three. I rely on a physiatrist for physical medicine rehabilitation. I rely on occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, when appropriate. I rely on the things that I need to help daily life. We have medications for gait. They're not always successful, but sometimes they are. I have agents for energy, agents for mood and depression, which is so very common in MS. And if your clinician is not asking you about mood and bladder and falls and gait and energy, bring it up, because that's where you live today. That's where you live at this very moment in time, and it's essential that that be part of the dialogue. The part that I'm leaving off, Mindy, you're in the back of the room, and so Mindy's going to talk to you about yoga, which brings up the idea that the fourth bucket is about wellness. And that's the collaborative. What's wellness? Wellness, if I say, do you all know what I mean by wellness? Most people will sort of vaguely say, kinda, yes. And I think we all have a vague sense of what is it that you do at home that makes life better today and that makes your MS life better in the future? It's about exercise, including yoga. It's about diet, not weight loss as primary goal, but eating healthy as primary goal. Weight loss can also be part of that, but eating healthy is the primary. It's about maintaining mood and maintaining the spirituality that you can within the place of your comfort. It's about maintaining your connectivity. So Chris, I think one of the things that the MS societies always talked about is not losing connections. And that was meant as an idea about not losing neuronal connections, that is, your connections in your nervous system, but also the essential that you maintain your connections with your friends and your family and your community, and in this case, the valuable component of the EMS society and the other people who do so much good as an organizational group for MS. So don't lose track of that. With any luck, we'll hear about what we can do for environment in MS as well. Some of that's changed. And so I've always, I had an exercise video that I put out about 15 years ago. I always said I kind of believed in exercise, particularly for other people. And but it really is a big part of maintaining good health. I have a, my oldest daughter is an eating disorders counselor, and she was one of the people who influenced me as well as a doctor at Sinai in New York, Dr. Kat Sands, who really started to think about diet in MS differently than we used to. So if this was 15 years ago, or even three years ago, I would have been saying, weight loss is really a good thing, because it's good for your general health, et cetera, et cetera. But really, what she pointed out, and what my daughter pointed out, is the essential for eating a healthy diet as the primary goal. We used to say, if you eat healthy, it will advantage you in the future. There's clear evidence that eating healthy makes you feel better with respect to energy today for many people. So what's a healthy diet? Many of you have, have any of you been on a special MS diet? You could raise your hands if you're not timid. Little hands showing. In my practice, thank you for an acknowledgement. A lot of people don't like to raise their hands. There are favorite diets that people think are the end-all diets, the swank diet, the wall diet, the keto diet, the this. The diet that I think tends to be in favor in the MS community right now is the Mediterranean diet, and that's the work of Dr. Kat Sands at Sinai in New York, showing that there are improvements in outcome and improvements in how you feel today. So that's my fourth bucket, wellness. And I said there are only four buckets, but there's a fifth bucket. If your diabetes is out of control, if you have, if your cardio respiratory status is out of control, if your depression is out of control, if your anxiety is out of control, if you're, and on and on and on, your MS won't do as well. If you have urinary tract infections constantly, you name it. If you, if the other comorbidities that occur in MS and outside of MS aren't under control too, your MS will have a harder time. So the fifth bucket is the rest of your general health. Pay attention. Don't let that be neglected. Poor diabetes control means poor MS control, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Poor depression, anxiety means poor MS control, including poor compliance with medications. So that's, that's the next thing I wanted to talk about. So those are our medications. So 1993, one medication in MS. Do you all have a sense of how many medications there are right now? Disease-modifying therapies? I heard twenties, yeah. So I hesitate. I heard 27, I heard twenties. I tend to only say twenties. I say more than 25, because the number keeps changing. No matter what number I say it is, it's one more tomorrow. And so I wind up saying more than 25. But those two callouts, I don't know where the second one came from, and we're both correct. How do I choose? How do we choose a medicine? And I will tell you a story. John, I don't know if I've ever told you the story, but I will tell you a story. I was at a meeting at the University of Colorado 20, well, 15 years ago, convened by the chairman of the Department of Neurology, John Corboy. And he asked the neurologists around the table, most of whom were academics, and most of whom were chair of the Department of Neurology or MS, and he said, what's your philosophy of treatment? Everybody said how they treated. And John Corboy looked at the group, and he said, none of you have a philosophy. You're all treating ad hoc. You're all treating the one person in front of you without having any enduring philosophy of your own. And he was right, of course. Years later, I said to John Corboy at a meeting, I said, by the way, I have a fly, I've adopted your idea that, he said, I have a philosophy. My philosophy is the early use of higher efficacy therapies. And I met him at a meeting some years later, and I said, John, I agree with your, I now believe that I have really adopted a philosophy much like yours, and that was the early use of higher efficacy therapies. He said, but there's no consensus. He said, Barry, there's a consensus, the people who agree with us and the people who are wrong. It's a little more definitive. There's a debate, and this is an MSAA debate between a father and daughter, between using early use of high efficacy therapies and his daughter, who says, yeah, but don't forget to individualize therapy per patient. This is, in fact, my daughter, Dr. Lori Travis, and me having that debate. I think we have convincing evidence that earlier use of higher efficacy therapies is better in general than what we used to call the escalation approach, and that is beginning with lower efficacy therapies and only escalating to higher efficacy therapies when problems occur. And I've tended to believe that philosophically, because if you use, move from the earlier group of therapies, which are about 30% better than placebo, the legacy therapies, to the middle group, you add some risk and you add some benefit. You get about 50% benefit. If you use, if you move to the highest efficacy group, you move towards more like 70% benefit, but I think you really reduce your immunosuppressive risk. So I think when you move up to the highest levels of therapeutic benefit, you tend to move up in, from low risk, low benefit, to moderate risk, to moderate benefit, to higher risk and a little lower, I'm sorry, higher benefit and a little lower risk. And so I've tended to, but use more often as a philosophy. Then you said to me, how often you break your philosophy? So if someone were able to look at my actual prescribing pattern, they would see that I break the rules all the time, because there's some individual in front of me in whom the individual decision becomes the overriding decision. We have some medications that work in two diseases at once. So we have one MS medicine that works for psoriasis in MS. We have another one that works for ulcerative colitis in MS. So sometimes you make a decision that we would call a two-for, two for the price of one. But it is, in fact, I think, a movement of the general prescribing community, especially the MS community, that we are using our best agents earlier rather than saving them or reserve for late. So trying not to run over my time. Let's see, I'm looking for Stuart. I'll go about 10 more minutes, and then I'll, and then I'll wait for questions and answers. So for MS 101, the other questions might be causation. What's new about causation? We've always said that some people are genetically predisposed, more than others, but genetics aren't determinate. If you're in America and you have nobody in the family with MS, your risk of MS is probably one in 1,000. If your mom or dad have MS, it's probably two in 100. So your risk has gone up 20 times. But that's not the same as autosomal dominant, autosomal recessive. If your identical twin sister has MS, and this will really genetically determine, you would too. But the fact is, if your identical twin sister has MS, your risk is 30%. So there is a genetic component to the risk that sets up susceptibility, but it does not make an absolute determination. What else matters? We think that things like vitamin D and sunlight matter. Increasingly, we're talking about the EB virus. We know that almost everybody in America has the EB virus, and virtually everybody with MS does. So almost everybody who doesn't have MS, 98% of America, has EB virus. Virtually 100% of MS patients have, if tested, EB virus, either they got it symptomatically or not. It looks like people who got EB virus, or even mono, after they were, after childhood, late childhood, early teens, do create a susceptibility to MS. It looks like it is one of the key determinants. We always thought that there was a viral, a viral trigger. It looks like the EB virus is increasingly likely that one. So what does the future hold? I told you I'd talk about the future. The biggest thing that we're talking about right now within the field is, and I will. So I'm being reminded that this is about NMO and about MS, and that I should not neglect to talk about NMO, and I certainly won't. And the future. So the future, I think, is a bunch of things. I told you we were great and getting great, better and better and better at reducing the acute inflammation of MS, and that is the relapses. From one every couple of years, you could expect attacks one every year or two or three, to now one every 10 or 11 years with our best agents. That's great. We haven't been very good at dealing with late progression. And we believe that that has an explanation. All the agents we're currently using, all the agents we're currently using, deal with the immunology of MS in the bloodstream before you get to the brain. So in the immune structures and in the bloodstream, in the marrow, but not in the brain. They don't penetrate brain very well. So if there is smoldering inflammation going on in brain, you don't get to it. You can be on the best agent in town, and you don't get to the smoldering inflammation that is going on, protected by the, we call the blood-brain barrier, that keeps out large molecules. There is a whole group of medications that you're going to be hearing about next year called BTKI. Have any of you, have any of you heard that particular molecule, BTKI? I know you don't like to raise hands, but if you all don't mind raising hands. So some of you know BTKI. How many of you have not heard of BTKI? Then it's something new. So BTKI is Bruton's Tyrosine Kinase Inhibitors. BTKI are small molecules. So for once, we're going to have a molecule that penetrates brain and can get to the smoldering inflammation that we believe causes late progression. We'll have a better shot at late progression. Also, all of our current agents work on the adaptive immune system and not the innate immune system. The BTKI group will work on the adaptive and the innate immune system. So one of the things I want you to keep your eye on is the discussion of smoldering inflammation, the late inflammation of MS that you can't get to so easily, and a new group of agents. Many of the companies will have one. So Genzyme will have one, Genentech will have one, Biogen will have one, Novartis will have one, EMD Serona will have one. They're all racing to the finish line. I think we'll see the results of the first phase three studies in February at ECTRUMS, and I'm hoping they'll reach the market by the end of '24. Real hope for late progression. Number two, people tell you that they understand prognosis. So you'll say to your neurologist, how am I doing? How am I going? "How am I doing, and how am I going to do?" And hopefully, they're relatively encouraging, or hopefully, they're relatively encouraging, but it's truthful. But I don't think we've got a good enough handle on progression, either early in MS or late MS, and not as good as we say we are at judging prognosis. But we're getting better, and we're getting better because of what we're calling humeral markers. There's something called Neurofilament Light. There's one that we call GFAP. There's an array of blood markers that we call, that fit together by a group called OCTIVE, that we're using to try to understand not just one cell, but the whole cellular symphony of MS, to understand prognosis better. How much inflammation is going on? How much degenerative change is going on? Where do I stand? Where does the treatment need to be? Does it need to be more balanced toward this or toward that? Or maybe in me, not at all? So that's where I hope we're going there. And prevention. So if the EB virus is so relevant, might there be a vaccine, delivered early enough to reduce the likelihood of EB virus infections, mono, et cetera, and prevent MS in individuals? Might we be able to attack that EB virus by an antiviral agent? And by doing so, reduce the burden and the likelihood of MS? So we're working on prevention in a new and novel way. And we're still working on remyelination. I've been engaged in many of the research projects in MS, including remyelinating therapies, which have not succeeded to date. But we haven't lost our interest in repair, not just prevention, but repair. So keep your eye on that space. Maybe the end of this, before I talk about NMO, is to tell you, I'm so excited to talk about MS 101 today, because it's so different from what I would have said a year ago. And that's what MS is. The field of MS is one of this constant learning, constant changing, understanding that 10 years ago, I was wrong about this and that, or half-right about something else, and learning and getting better and better. And so our strides are your strides. This is really something that I want to tell you more than anything else. We've really, really made enormous strides, and you're part of it, and we're part of it. NMO. So the... How many of you know the term NMO? Neuromyelitis optica. So when I was... Thank you. I'm watching the hands go up a little. People really don't like to raise their hands, and so, hold it up. So I've been asked, I've asked people to cue me when I don't keep the microphone close enough so that you can't hear me. Neuromyelitis optic is a very interesting problem. I told you that there were times when I was dead wrong, and the field was dead wrong. So when I left residency, we didn't have, we didn't believe that NMO, neuromyelitis optic was a separate disorder. We thought it was bad MS. And we knew that there were people who had demyelinating events with optic neuritis just seemed worse. Instead of just a little loss of vision that got better with steroids, it was a big loss of vision that didn't get so much better with steroids. Now, they would have an attack in the spinal cord. But instead of being a little bit of weakness that got better with steroids, it was a terrible hit often that ended them up in a wheelchair, the first event or the second event. So we just said, "It's this thing that is really bad MS." But we didn't understand why it was so much different. What we came to understand, mostly by work from the Mayo Clinic Rochester and Mayo Clinic Scottsdale, Dr. Dean Wingerchuck, who is really one of the pioneers in neuromyelitis optica, was that NMO is not MS. It's its own separate disorder. And whereas in MS, we don't have an identified antibody antigen. We say it's an autoimmune disease, but someone said, "Well, show me the antibodies. Show me the antigen." We don't have them. In NMO, we do have the antibody and antigen. We know that at the end of a cell called the astrocyte, at the tip of it, there is a receptor called aquaporin 4. And if you have an antibody to that receptor, you injure the astrocyte, you injure the ability of the brain to keep out water, and you cause injury to the neurons, to the astrocytes, to the optic nerve, to the spinal cord, and to the brain. And so, as opposed to being just bad MS, it's a separate disorder. I told you, we didn't have a therapy, that was an approved therapy for MS, till 1993. We didn't have an approved therapy for NMO until, I think, 2021, is 2021? And in 2021, we went from zero approved therapies to three approved therapies for neuromyelitis optica. It's made a world of difference. It's really made a world of difference. A, it taught us all to be humble, neurologists, because what we thought was so, wasn't so. It made us have, it gave us the chance to really help patients, because if we can prevent an attack in MS, I'm sorry, in NMO, we can prevent real disability. It's not progression-driven, it's attack-driven. And so preventing attacks, which is what the three agents do. And one of the sponsors for today, Alexion, is one of the agents, has one of the agents. The other is Horizon, and the other is Genentech. So we have three different agents, all approved for NMO. We're very grateful. What's our message to the neurologic community? The general neurologist, the ophthalmologist, the emergency room doctor? We're trying to get them to recognize NMO and keep a low threshold. Preventing attacks of NMO is essential. And we call it NMOSD, Neuromyelitis Optica Spectrum Disorder. So optica in myelitis is spinal cord, so neuromyelitis optica spectrum disorder. It can present with optic neuritis, it can present with spinal cord injury. It can present with intractable hiccups or intractable nausea. It can show up with some odd syndromes, including encephalopathies. But it shows up very differently from MS. MS is 3:1, women to men. NMO, 9:1, women to men, especially African-American, especially Latina, especially indigenous population in the United States, especially Asian. So our real, if you say to me, "What's different about MS today than three years ago, five years ago?" This represents an extraordinary breakthrough. First, understanding what the antibody was, work from the Mayo Clinic. Second, developing three approved therapies. Third, teaching our community to keep a lower threshold so that when patients come in who have optic neuritis appropriate, spinal cord lesions appropriate, other syndromes like NMO, that the threshold is low and the tests are done. There is a blood test for NMO, and a cousin of NMO called Mogad, myelin oligodendrocyte glycoprotein. If we get a positive NMO test, they've got NMO, and we can begin treatment. And treating early makes, again, all the difference. So, summary. Talked a lot about MS, talked a little bit about NMO. The message I really want to get to you is, we're getting better at this. What does it mean that we're getting better? That you should be asking more of us? That 50 years ago, I think, ask your neurologist to be a nice person, who paid attention and listened. But we couldn't do that much. Today, there's so much we can do. There's so much that we should be asking of ourselves. There's so much that you should be expecting and asking of us. We should be hopeful about the future, hopeful about the present, and excited about where this is all going. So that's my major message. And now I will stop. I said, questions and answers, and again, Stuart will tell me when I have to stop, but I am delighted to answer any questions.
Hi, Dr. Hendon. It's good to see you. I appreciate you coming out. It's always good to listen to you.
Thank you.
I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. For relapsing, remitting MS, what do you think the best therapy on the market today is?
So it would put me on the spot if I was willing to be put on the spot. So really, what I'm going to talk about is philosophy. I would actually be not telling you the truth if I told you I had one and only one favorite agent, because that's not true. But I'll answer the question. So what's my favorite agent? The real answer, I'm going to do a kind of a slippery answer, then a real answer. The slippery answer, but the true one is, the best agent is whatever's the best agent for that particular person. So when I say to the hypothetical person in front of me, so you are now stuck with being the hypothetical person in front of me, I say, "I've got this great agent, and it's a pill you take such and such." And the person says, "But I hate pills. I picked the wrong agent." And so it becomes a dialogue. I often begin, so I'll tell you that I cheat, just so you know. I begin often the conversation by saying, "We have more than 25 therapies. Some work really well, some are less powerful. Would you like us to talk about the ones that are highly effective or the ones that are less effective?" Almost everybody says, "Please tell me about the ones that are effective." And so I'm begun by cheating. And that is my philosophy, that I generally like the early use of higher efficacy therapies. At that point, it is, some are pills, some are injectables, and some are infusions. What makes more sense to you? Does it make more sense to you to go into an infusion center twice a year, to self-inject once a month, to take a pill every day? Or even with some agents, to take a pill 10 days this year, 10 days next year? I talked about maintenance therapies. There are also what we call induction therapies. So induction therapies have attraction to some people. Stem cell is an induction therapy I rarely use. There's another induction therapy that I thought was too risky. And there's a current induction therapy, which is a pill, five days in March, five days in April, nothing the rest of the year. Five days the following March, five days the following April, nothing thereafter. With many of the patients not needing follow-up medications, and some of the patients needing follow-up medications. But for some medications, we've induced acquiescence, where they don't need continuous therapies. So some people say, "I'd love to talk about that induction." Some people say, "I love the idea of a twice-a-year therapy." Some people say, "I don't want to go into a center. I want something I can do at home." Some people say, "Give me a pill." If I've expressed my philosophy, and my philosophy is early use of high efficacy therapies, there's so many options at that point, it's got to be me listening. Is that fair enough?
Thank you for that answer. I guess part two of that question was just, I suppose, side effects is a big issue that you have to consider for different therapies?
Yeah, so I think that's where I think we've gotten better and better. This is opinion, but I will be delighted to give you my opinion. I think the early therapies had side effects but low risk and low benefit. I think the middle group, the sort of the middle group of pills that we use, had side effects, moderate benefit, and moderate risk. I think our highly, our most efficacious agents actually have somewhat lower immunosuppressive risk, somewhat lower risk of PML when we use them right, and a low side effect profile. But they're all immunosuppressive. That means I tell everybody that I treat, "Be prepared for the fact that you'll be a little more susceptible to infection of various sorts. Be a little more aware that vaccinations for some of my agents won't be as effective. I won't be able to get as powerful an immune response from vaccination." But I think the most, the newer agents, and I'm purposely not naming them, one by one by one. And that's on purpose, because I want you to think about it as a philosophy, and that is, we've got a bunch of highly efficacious, highly efficacious maintenance meds with some immunosuppression, but benefit-risk ratios that I think are excellent. And we also have induction, what I call induction therapies, that is intermittent therapies with a hope of producing long-term acquiescence.
Can you speak, please, about the new biomarker blood test? And tell us what it's for and what it does?
Sure. So biomarkers. Let me define biomarkers. Biomarkers are some tests that we do that predicts something about the future of your MS. That tells us whether you are more likely in the future to progress, whether your medications are working properly, et cetera. The biomarker we've been using up till now really has been MRI. And that's what you all know as a biomarker. So we use a biomarker MRI, and we say, "Whoa, we don't see any new lesions. Our medication's working." Or we see a relapse, a new event on your MRI, a gadlin-enhancing lesion, that's a marker that our agent is suboptimal, not working fully. We now have a bunch of humeral biomarkers, which means biomarkers in blood. The one that you hear the most about is called Neurofilament Light. Neurofilament Light is a protein in the exoskeleton of the neuron, of the axon. And if you injure the axon, I'm sorry, if you injure the axon of the nerve, it's released into the spinal fluid, it's released into the blood, and then we can measure, "Whoa, something has been injuring the brain or spinal cord, the neuron." The one that you're hearing the most about is Neurofilament Light. It's pretty good. I don't think it's good enough by itself. So we're talking about other agents that we like as well. One is called GFAP, for example. But there is a group, and the group is called OCTIVE, O-C-T-A-V-E. They've got an 18-humeral biomarker array that they're hoping will be a validated tool for understanding where you are on the risk level for a future attack or for future progression. That's where we're going. It's commonly, it is available commercially right now, both Neurofilament Light and the OCTIVE blood test, and is being used, I think, increasingly.
Dr. Hendon, I don't know where to start. First of all, thank you so much for all this wonderful information about what's new. And it's exciting, it really is. I was diagnosed by you 30 years ago with MS. And my question is, because you created a holistic approach. You spoke about a holistic approach, which is very new. And that's the path that I took as an interior designer. I'm a holistic interior designer. And the healing environment aspect is my question to you. How do you see that becoming really part of the treatment? That people have to become aware of where they are and how that's affecting them to better have the medication work?
So you know that when there are... Don't leave yet, Stuart. So one of the things you're going to learn is that when I'm in the room with an expert more than myself, I will turn the question back around to the expert. So would you give us a two-minute discussion of the importance of a healing environment for neurological disorders, including MS?
The way we feel is very neurological. And we feel, it's all about, I always say, "Rooms have no feelings, you do." So when you're in a room, you're feeling the room, the energy of the room. Your five senses are dealing with all that. And that goes through your nervous system. And how that affects you sometimes is subconscious. Sometimes you're aware of it. But nevertheless, your body knows. And I don't know if you know the term psychoneuroimmunology, which is the mind-body connection to healing. And to me, it's all about healing. That's what you spoke about. We want people to heal. And we need, when they walk out of your office and get medication and all that, when they go home and take it, what is the environment? How is that helping them to heal? And we have the control of that in our homes. We don't have it in a room like this, but we have it when we go home. And I'd like to know how you can help people understand that in your treatment.
Well, I think, interestingly, your answer was the answer, and that is, I think we've, I always credit the early Asian influence to thinking about rooms and placements. I remember at Banner, when I was a younger neurologist, they said, "We need healing gardens. We need an environment in which people actually find peace and a sense of self." I'm the father of a psychologist, I'm the father of a neurologist, I'm the father of a psychiatrist. And so the idea of psychobiology is a very important one to me. Healing environments are part of that. I absolutely thank you for bringing that up, too. Stuart? There's a...
Hi, doctor. Thank you again for being here tonight. I'm grateful that I was able to attend. Two questions, I'll make them quick. You mentioned the difference between late progression. I know, but I have to read. Late progression, early and late progression. And that, for me, is correlated with like differences between relapsing and primary progressive. So for me, I'm fairly newly diagnosed, well, three years. And so I'm still learning. And I'd appreciate just a slight explanation on that. And then two, when you were talking about the buckets, you said that the second bucket, it takes a village, and you mentioned steroids. I just needed a tiny bit of clarification on that second bucket.
Sure. Sure. Let me take the second question first because it's easy. The steroids really are relapse agents. So if you've, if you're in the middle of an attack, it's common for us, if you've had acute optic neuritis or acute spinal cord lesion, if I get a phone call, doctor, I suddenly weak from the, both my lower extremities as of, it's lasted more than 24 hours, nothing else is going on that should have caused it. I think I'm having a relapse, I do a workup quickly and establish that it's true, it's a relapse. One of the things we can offer is steroids. That's not my village. That, that's just an acute treatment to see if we can get that person feeling better fast. The village part is about everything else that's going on. My need for a psychologist often, psychologist psychiatrist for mood, neuropsychiatrist for cognition, a neuropsychologist for cognition, a urologist for bladder, physical therapy, occupational therapy, that's my village. My village is all the other people who, who are part of my therapeutic community that deal with everything else that goes bump in the night. But, and let's see, was there, there was a, ah, progression. So the language I want you to learn is worsening that is either related to relapse. You'll see that especially early in MS. R-A-W, raw, relapse associated worsening. You're going to hear that term more, raw. The other is PERLA, it's a progression independent, or PIRA, progression independence of relapse activity. And that's, that's really what we see often, can be early in MS. In fact, we think it probably occurs from the very beginning to the very end. But it tends to pick up steam in late MS and becomes the more prominent problem. Early MS, it's much more about the activity, the relapse, the event, et cetera. We were, that's what we've been so good at treating. It's late MS, the progression independent of relapse activity that we think we're going to get a better handle on, the more smoldering inflammation.
Thank you. Next question here?
Yes, Doctor. I was diagnosed about 11 years ago, and I know most of, most of us here have heard the story even longer. When I was diagnosed, remyelination was the golden grail or the holy grail. Now, remyelination is still the holy grail, and you said, we're not there yet. Is, has there been any progress? Are we making any, is there hope on the horizon or are we caught in a rut? Where are we? Thank you, sir.
Sure. So question is remyelination. So I, I did some of the early research as part of a collaborative on remyelination with the medicine called opacinumab. And we had great hopes that opacinumab would create a genetic turnoff that would allow remyelination to occur again. It, it just wasn't good enough. I think we got it wrong. I think that the newer ideas are, are there other agents that, that we've been using in other disorders? That we've been using as antihistamines or whatever else, that still have some undetected ability to improve remyelination? No one's given up on remyelination. But it may be some other things we need to do. We may need to go to the precursor cell, the oligodendrocyte precursor cell that makes myelin, and learn how to turn it on and grow it and migrate it to the place it needs to be, and then have it act there. So my, my, the early work that I did, I think it could be improved upon and maybe will do better. But I think everybody's still interested. I think the holy grail really now is, can we prevent MS? But the second one is, once it's already taken hold, can we do something to repair the injury that's occurred? So we have more than one holy grail, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I'll be there in a moment. Doctor, to go further on that question with the stem cells and, and specifically, what is stem cell to be repairing? Is it to be repairing the break in the axon or what? Can you explain all that, please?
So I, I talked about something called induction therapy. And I don't know if that's a term you all think about. Virtually every medicine you're using that's a disease modifying therapy is a maintenance therapy. You're taking it once a week, once a month, once every six months, but you're taking it this year. If someone says, I'm 25 years old, how long will I be taking it? The answer is for the next 30 years or so, 30, 40 years. There are some, there are some medications, only a few, there are three right now, that are commonly used, or two that are commonly used, that intend to induce a remission, induction, induce. One is stem cell. Stem cell doesn't repair a break in the neuron. What stem cell does is to create a chemotherapy approach to knock out the, the cells. And I think one of the cells we try to knock out is called a memory B cell. So this is at least the way I look at it. Again, apologies for being a little superficial. If you take a memory B cell that remembers it doesn't like myelin and goes and tells a T cell that it should go after myelin, you've got demyelination. If you can, with chemotherapy, and that's what, what stem cell therapy does first, with stem cell therapy, if you can knock out the B cells that remember they didn't like myelin and replace them with stem cells that do not have the same memory, you can create a whole new repertoire of immune cells that do not remember what the old repertoire remembered and hope to reduce the autoimmunity or the immunomediative inflammation. There is another agent right now, there is another agent which was given as an infusion that tried to do something very similar. There is a pill right now called mavinclad that you take five days this month, five days next month, and then nothing the, the rest of the year, repeat the following year. Some of those people will not need another medication again because you will have induced long-term acquiescence. Some will still need to take medications thereafter. We're getting better and better.
Okay, next question.
I'm not sure it's a question, but is there a spot at which, when the amount of time you've been diagnosed and your age equals the fact that there may not be treatments that are going to be effective anymore? And if that's the deal, and you're shaking your head yes, so what, what does a person who might have that do? Just live with it and that's kind of it?
So I think when I came around to the tables beforehand, one of the things you said is, I like a very real answer. I don't like a slippery answer. So I'll try to give you a very real answer. One is that MS becomes less and less inflammatory as we age. I'm, I'm always the oldest person in the room. And so I, I don't know how old the rest of you are, but I'm generally older. And so whatever I'm about to say is not ageist. But we know that if, if, there's something called immunosenescence. And immunosenescence means that the immune system ages as we age, and that the immune intensity diminishes because it's aging. And therefore, what the immune system did when it was most powerful, which was go on a rampage and cause attacks, it now doesn't do as much because it is more senescent, more quiet. We know that in the general population, those, those changes tend to occur in people in their 50s and 60s, for example. What we don't know right now is, for one individual, if you said for a population, can I tell you that, that the 60-year-old has less immune power than the 30-year-old? Absolutely. That the need for the anti-inflammatory agent will be less compared to risk in the 60-year-old compared to the 20-year-old? Absolutely. What I don't have is the ability in the one individual in front of me to say, by the way, your immune system has reached the stage when, when we can't treat anymore. Dr. Corboy, who I previously mentioned, did a study called the DISCO MS Study, in which he tried to answer that particular question. He took a group of people in their 50s and 60s who'd been quiet for a number of years, MRI quiet and brain quiet, I'm sorry, MRI quiet and relapse quiet, and took half of them off their meds and kept half on, and said it was hard for him to tell the difference between the two populations, although some people had more MRI events who were taken off their meds. I still believe that our markers that we talked about, those humoral markers, will be our way of telling who is still inflamed enough to need their medications. Now, I'm going to answer the question a second way because it's important. I don't believe there's any time in the course of my taking care of people when I say to them, there's nothing I can do. And the answers are, it isn't all about the disease modifying therapy. Are you exercising? Are you eating healthy? Are you maintaining your psychological wellbeing? Are you maintaining your relationships? Are you watching your bladder? So for me, it, I don't give up. Remember, I'm older than most of my patients. But for me, it is a philosophic. There's always something to do, but don't do the inappropriate first, do no harm.
Over here, please.
Hi, you've mentioned humoral markers a couple times. Do you feel that those are something that should be used on a more regular basis to kind of track your progression like MRIs? Or is that something that you don't see becoming as regular screening?
It's a great question. So the answer is, I have, we, the, the neurologic community in Phoenix is a very affectionate, warm community, and we like each other. And I know that there's some who use the, I'll talk about the OCTAVE, the 18 biomarker composite as an example. My daughter, with whom I work, same practice, tends to use it a lot. I tend to use it more selectively right now. If you said to me, do I think I'll be using it more and more? The answer is yes. Where will I be using it? The question is, what about the 60-year-old who says, do I still to be, need to be on medication? I believe that, that such a test will be helpful in me saying, it looks like your degree of inflammation has quieted down, that now we can talk about getting you off medication or no. I don't believe it's time yet. So I think that'll be helpful at certain juncture points. Another juncture point, I'm on a new medication, is it working? I've used MRI, I will never stop using MRI, but can I use this as an adjunct? And that is cheaper, faster, can I use it as an adjunct? So I will, I am using it a little, I'll be using it a lot more in the future, I think.
Thank you. Last question. Regarding the biomarkers, OCTAVE's test and the neurofilament light, can you please tell everybody specifically what these markers are to show?
What these markers are?
To show. To provide.
What they want, what they're trying to do.
What they're expecting them to do.
Good, good. So let me use, I'm going to use neurofilament light as if it is everything. I, I really don't want to use that alone, but I, so neurofilament light is a breakdown product of the neuron. It exists, it's this part of the skeleton of the axon that goes from the neuron. If the neuron's injured and dies, it, it lets off neurofilament light. Therefore, if I am, if I have a patient in the hypothetical who is about to have a relapse, it may go up. If I have a patient who's having a relapse, it will go up. And it will tell me by going up something about the level of, of inflammation and injury that's ongoing. A hope might be that if I put that person on a medication and I see the level go down, I will say, I think I've achieved a goal, that things are better. If it doesn't go down, I may say, this looks like a suboptimal therapy because injury to the neuron is still ongoing. I don't think one marker for one cell type is enough. I think you need a marker for at least astrocytes, neurons, microglia, and other members of the symphony that go on with the immune system. Together, I hope that they will tell us more about inflammation and injury and cell loss and degeneration, whether a person is at high risk or low risk for the future, whether the person can be taken off medicines or not taken off medicines, whether the current therapy that we're using is working optimally or not optimally in conjunction with MRI. It's still a work in progress. So, so if you think I've told you that this is a perfect one, not yet. But this has moved us forward very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
You're very welcome. So let me say a thank you, too. So A, thank you for showing up as part of a, part of the MS community. Stuart, thank you again for, for another, second time this year of getting together, but, but mostly to you all. Thanks for the questions asked, the attention and, and caring about the same things that we care about so centrally. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to say goodnight to you all because a lot of you that are back east, it's past your bedtime. All right, I understand that. All right, so goodnight. Thank you.